Our invocation remains standing for the National Anthem. Lord, we thank you for this day, this opportunity to come together. Thank you for all our many blessings and may everything that takes place here tonight be pleasing in your sight. In your holy name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. At this time, I would like to have our band from Murrayville Elementary School. If you will please come up, there's a microphone up here. We want to recognize you and if you would, please give us your name and the grade you're in. If you'd give us your name and the grade you're in and then stand up just one second.
Hi, my name is Mircha Niki and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Grayson Dwyer and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Chloe Jones and I'm in fifth grade.
My name's Gracie Timken and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Rosie Richards and I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Madison Johnson and I'm in fifth grade.
I'm Ed Stomack, I'm the music teacher at Murrayville Elementary, not in fifth grade.
And if our color guard would please come forward. Because our color guard is from John T. Hogarth High School, so if you would, your names and your rank and your grade levels, please. Start talking with the first young man right here. Go ahead, I'll cut you off, repeat your name.
Lieutenant, junior grade, Michael Bumblew, Junior at Hogarth.
Cadet Petty Officer, third class, Beauchamp, ninth grade.
Cadet Petty Officer, Pisa, ninth grade.
Cadet Seaman Thompson, ninth grade.
I never did get the whole story, but the young ladies were telling me that they had one, one boy in the band. I don't know what happened, he broke his arm, so I don't know what happened there. That was very good, very unusual. Yeah, excellent. Okay, Ms. Adams, will you call the roll, please?
Donald S. Hayes.
Here.
Jeanette S. Nichols.
Here.
Janice A. Kavanaugh. Tammy J. Kovos.
Here.
Lisa Eastep.
Here.
Derek G. Hickey.
Here.
Edward B. Higgins.
Here.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda, any additions or deletions?
Couple of changes. Under item seven, information, C should be moved to new business, item S, appendix CC. Under superintendent's report, I'd like to add discussion about the impact of the Senate budget that was proposed last week. That'll be for information only.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll do the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's approved. Item four is our recognition of achievement.
Good afternoon, everyone. Our first recognition this evening goes to a very elite group of students who have been accepted into the Governor's School of North Carolina. The Governor's School is the oldest statewide summer residential program for AIG high school students in the nation. The following are students who will be attending the 2014 session, their respective high school and the program they will be participating in. As I say your name, would you please come forward so that you may be recognized? Ariana Torella of Hogarth, who will be in the Choral Music Program. Madeline Lillich of Hogarth, also in the Choral Music Program. Evan Lynette of Hogarth, Instrumental Music Program. Dean Yon Tzu of Laney, Instrumental Music Program. Kaylee Strickland of Ashley, Instrumental Music Program. Clara Hair Grog, also of Ashley, Social Science Program. Catherine Lawth of Hogarth, Social Science Program. Iris Monahan of New Hanover was unable to be here with us tonight. Anthony Prado of New Hanover High School, Theater Program. Megan Orgachuk of Hogarth, Mathematics Program. Torrance Yang of Hogarth, Mathematics Program. Clara Seifert of New Hanover High School, Natural Science Program. Emma Bingam of Isaac Bear, Early High School, Natural Science Program. Joseph Kang of Hogarth, Natural Science Program. Luke Guo of Hogarth, Natural Science Program. And finally, Margaret Powell of New Hanover High School, Natural Science Program. And while we gather for a group photo, if the parents of all these students would stand up, we'd like to recognize you for this great achievement as well. Next, we will recognize the Title I Distinguished Schools. The National Title I Distinguished Schools Program recognizes those Title I schools that hold students to high standards and demonstrate exemplary effectiveness in such areas as providing opportunities for all students to achieve, establishing partnerships with parents, families, and the community, and implementing sustained research-based professional development. At the Title I meeting this past April, our own Mrs. Emma Jackson was very pleased to learn that three of our schools here in New Hanover County have achieved this designation for three consecutive years. So it is my honor to recognize our outstanding Title I schools tonight and their principals. As I say your name, will you please come forward so that we may recognize you? First, we will honor Bradley Creek Elementary and Principal Jane Keiker. The next school that the state recognizes, College Park Elementary and Principal Maria Green. And finally, our very own Pine Valley Elementary and Principal Rebecca Higgins-Op grand. Yes. Thank you and congratulations. Our next recognition goes to a student that has just about garnered us national headlines because of his academic excellence and our board has asked us to recognize him this evening. Our district has many outstanding students, as you see here tonight, but this particular student stands out so much among his peers because he was accepted into seven Ivy League schools, not to mention thousands of dollars in various scholarships and numerous other awards that he has been given. He's also been recognized greatly in our local media and so therefore it is my distinct pleasure and honor to ask Mr. Patrick Peoples from the great New Hanover High School to come up here so we can recognize him as an outstanding student in college acceptances. Congratulations. Is Patrick's family here? Would you please stand? We need to honor you. Our next award recognizes our achievements in the United Way campaign. New Hanover County Schools raised nearly $30,000 and we earned the 2013 Campaign Achievement Award for the Cape Fear area for the third consecutive year in a row. And this is pretty outstanding in a recession-type economy that we have. The district also received the Top Ten Campaign of the Year Award for Excellence and we could not have earned these honors without the leadership of our principals and our department leaders. Hogarth High School earned the Highest Performing School Award for raising over $2,800 during their school-wide campaign. Ms. Wanda Seed is our United Way Coordinator for Hogarth and I would ask that Mrs. Seed and Principal Dr. Stephen Sullivan, please come forward so that we may honor you. Thank you. Our top performing middle school campaign was Trask Middle School raising just under $1,000. They couldn't be here this evening. The top performing elementary school for our campaign was Murrayville Elementary, raising about $2,000. Jordan Stein Hilber was the United Way Coordinator and I would ask that she and the principal, Ms. Tim Dominowski, please come forward so that we may recognize you. And finally, our Transportation Department received the district's Campaign Achievement Award this year for the district's department with the best campaign. The United Way Coordinator for Transportation is Valeria Jones. I would ask that Ms. Jones and Director Ken Nance come forward so that we may honor you. Transportation is one of our top winners every year, so they definitely do more than make those wheels go round and round. Thank you. Our next award, the United States Department of the Air Force designates units as distinguished who show personal growth and accomplishments of cadets, contributions of the instructors as mentors, and who have the support of the school and the local community. Therefore, it is my honor to present the Award of Distinguished Unit to Laney High School's Air Force Junior ROTC Unit. This unit is led by Lieutenant Colonel Gary O. Green, U.S. Air Force Retired. Colonel Green, would you please come forward, Lieutenant Colonel?
Sir, this is our group commander this year, Nicole Cook. She went to East Carolina with a fair amount of money this year. And our group commander select Riley Michler, who's going to make this happen again next year.
No pressure. Thank you and congratulations. Early, every year, the Association of Soil and Water Conservation Districts hold educational contests where students from across the county, region, and state compete. Three New Hanover County school students won first place in their poster contest in at least one level of competition. The first-place winner for the fifth-grade poster contest on the county level was Lauren Baker, a fifth-grade student at Pine Valley. Her teacher is Ms. Jennifer Ross. Lauren is unable to be with us tonight, but if Mrs. Higgins-Op grand would come back up here and accept it, we would really be grateful. Is she here? There she is. The first-place winner at the area-level fourth-grade poster contest was Martina Price, a fourth-grade student also at Pine Valley. Rebecca, you're showing off tonight. Her teacher is Ms. Amy Bell. Martina, will you please come forward? Next, Katie Estrekas, a ninth-grade student at Hogarth, went on to win the ninth-grade poster contest at the state level. Her teacher is Ms. Shari Thompson. Congratulations, Katie, if you're here, would you please come forward? There she is. In addition, Hogarth High School had all three of their Eviro Bron teams placed in the top six at the area level, qualifying them to move on to the state competition where they represented their school well. The team coaches are Mr. Ed Terzian and Ms. Shari Thompson. Students, as I say your name, please come forward to accept your certificate. Sarah Spalding. Austin Miller. Elaine King. Caroline Eastep, that's a familiar name. Stephanie Smith. Megan Trotter. Amanda Winton. Bailey Saito. Paige Scott. Ashley Fry was unable to attend. Chrissy Kennedy. Josh Binion. Preston Shakar. Lindsay Justice. Nick Manini. Ryan Goodwin was unable to attend. Taryn Williams. And Vanise Leon. And finally, our final recognitions of the evening will be presented by a retired New Hanover County Schools employee, Mr. Gene Rovenbark, who's also the chairman of New Hanover County's Keep America Beautiful Program. Mr. Rovenbark.
Thank you. Good to see you, Don. I'm Gene Rovenbark, chairman of Keep America Beautiful of New Hanover County. In 1980, when I was principal of Bradley Creek School, Nancy Pritchett, who is also a member of the Keep America Beautiful Board, came to me and said, "You need to be a part of our Clean Community Commission and you need to go see Frances Parnell, who's a teacher over at Hogarth, and she'll tell you what to do." And I did, and I have been for 34 years, working with Keep America Beautiful on a national level and a local level. It is the primary nonprofit organization that promotes our communities in building a nice and safe and clean community and sustaining those communities. And during the years that I have been associated with them, the New Hanover County Schools' students and teachers have won numerous state-level awards and at least three national awards that Nancy and I attended, were invited to the White House to attend and receive on behalf of Keep America Beautiful. Now, if you are not one of the schools who is mentioned today and receiving a check and recognition, I encourage you to go to, just Google "New Hanover County Keep America Beautiful" or "Keep America Beautiful of New Hanover County" and get your schools to apply for and win one of these Green School Awards. We are, last year, we had five schools who won $1,000 divided among them. Tonight, we have nine schools who will be receiving $1,850 and I applaud them and congratulate them for taking part in helping our community to be more beautiful and also environmentally sound. So at this time, we have, our first-place winner is Bellamy Elementary School. If the representatives from Bellamy. That would be Dr. Benny Bryant and I think Kate Westner. Congratulations. And there's the money. Next, we have Murray Middle School, who is our second-place School of Excellence and they will be getting, there's a flag that they fly at the school and then there are banners that go under the flag that say "School of Excellence for Such-and-Such a Year" or "School of Quality" and those flags are supposed to be delivered Friday and as soon as that happens, I will make sure they get delivered to the school. So Murray Middle, representatives from there. Patrick McCarty. Kathy Larkins, Pam Broadbeck, and Effie Sparrow. Congratulations. And here's the money. Holly Tree Elementary. Laura Holiday. And her representative, her representative could not be here, so she's accepting. And here's the check. And your flag. Thank you. We've heard Murrayville Elementary tonight and again, they are receiving a Green School Award, School of Quality. If Pat, Tim Dominowski and Lisa Esby. Tim and I worked together just a few years ago. Congratulations, Tim and Lisa. Pine Valley Elementary, Rebecca Opgrand and Jenny Winkle. She couldn't be here. You have Doris Flowers and... Congratulations to you. Next is Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. When I was at Snipes, it was just Annie Herring Snipes Elementary School. Right, Maria? Cindy Talbert and Gretchen Wood and... Cindy Talbert and Gretchen Wood and Teresa Connell. Congratulations. Winter Park Elementary, Monica Goza, principal. Nancy Smythe is only for the remainder of the year due to some health, but pass that. Congratulations on to Muffy Smythe for me, if you will. Wrightsboro Elementary. Bonnie Hall, principal. Erica Huddle and Virginia Wheeler. And if you've kept count, that's eight. Our ninth School of Quality is Cape Fear Center of Inquiry and Beth Carter. If you will, please come forward. She's former New Hanover County employee also. Again, congratulations to all of the schools that participated in our Keep America Beautiful Green School Award. If your school did not receive an award, go to our website. Our deadline for entries was May 15th this year. We had a, we had eight judges to meet the 22nd and review all of the applications, and you've seen the results tonight. We encourage you to continue to help keep America beautiful by helping to keep New Hanover County beautiful as well. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is item five, Call to the Audience. We had no one sign up at this time for this Call to the Audience which relates to agenda items, so we'll move to item six, Administrative Personnel. Item A, Administrative Recommendations, Appendix A, Dr. Markley.
Mr. Chairman, we have two administrative recommendations. The first one is for the Director of Early Childhood Education, and that'll be Ms. Shannon Smiles. She has recommended to fill a position for a new position that was created when we received the Head Start Grant. She is currently working as the Director of Preschool Programs for Pender County and has worked in that position for the past 13 years. She's also worked in, as an Adolescent Parenting Program Coordinator and migrant Head Start Teacher. Her contract will begin July 1, 2014, and end on June 30, 2018. She received her BA from Metropolitan State College of Denver, her master's degree in early childhood education and curriculum instruction from NC Central, and recently obtained her Early Education Certification and Endorsement for Administrators and serves on the North Carolina Head Start Association Board of Directors. Highly qualified, and we are glad to welcome her to New Hanover County. She is here.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I present Ms. Shannon Smiles.
Thank you very much.
Now, you've got, you brought some folks with you. Now, go ahead and introduce the folks you brought with you.
If you would like.
My husband, Christopher Smiles, and my son, Cody Smiles, live in Scotty Elementary. We'll be going to our world soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Second administrative recommendation is for what'll be the New College Road Early Childhood Center, and the recommendation is John Bert Kilpatrick. Currently, Mr. Kilpatrick is the Assistant Principal at Pine Valley Elementary School and previously has served as an Assistant Principal at Williston. He's also served as a teacher at Murray and at Hogard. His administrative contract will be effective until June 30, 2018. Mr. Kilpatrick received his BA and master's degree in school administration from the University of North Carolina at Wilmington.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Supposed.
We have Mr. Kilpatrick here with us. All right, Bert, you bring anybody with you?
I brought my Pine Valley family.
Outstanding.
We got two dogs this weekend, so you cannot get children away from...
Congratulations.
That was all.
Correct.
Okay, item B, under Roman numeral six, is the Superintendent's Evaluation. The yearly evaluation of the superintendent has taken, has been going on and has taken place, and I would like at this time to read a summary that the board has prepared. The board has completed its annual evaluation of Dr. Timothy Markley, Superintendent of New Hanover County Schools, and is generally pleased with the direction our system is taking. The growth, this growth is demonstrated by increased graduation rates, decreased dropout rates, and higher SAT scores. However, the board notes a need for improvement in the evaluation and supervision of employees. The board looks forward to Dr. Markley's continued leadership as we address our significant capital needs through the bond campaign. And that is the end of our summary. Any other comments that any board members would like to add? Okay. Next item on the agenda, item C, Administrative Reassignments. This is for information only. Appendix D, D, Dr. Markley.
First of all, let me say again, thank you. It's always an honor and a pleasure to work here in New Hanover County. Administrative reassignments, we have three. Principal Will Hatch will be moving from Roland Greys to Johnson Pre-Cave. He will help us get the Head Start Program up and running there. Principal Sherry Pinto is moving, will move from Holly Shelter Middle School to Roland Greys Middle School, and then Principal Jane Kiker will move from Bradley Creek to Holly Shelter Middle School. Those will all be effective July 1.
Okay, thank you. Item seven, Roman numeral seven, Information. Item A, Policies on for First Reading. Mrs. Nichols.
Well, we only have one policy tonight, 7440 Student Promotion and Accountability. And it has been before the committee, and we, as I said, it's on for first reading. There are, one change that Mr. Bullard's going to make is the reference, the legal reference is not correct, so we'll get that changed in a few editorial, editing comments. But other than that, Dr. Smith, if you will present it, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. I'm presenting to you Policy 7440. With the changes in the state board policy, we are adding credit information regarding credit by demonstrating mastery. It's often referred to as CDM. What this does is it provides our students with the opportunity to receive high school course credit by passing two different phases. One would be that they'd end up taking the EOC associated with that course or a standardized assessment associated with that course, and then the second phase of that would require students to demonstrate their proficiency through the use of an artifact. Additions, additional changes in the policy are being made so that we're more in alignment with current state board policy in terms, in relation to promotion of students, and also to ensure alignment with our current practices when it comes to promotion of students. We are looking to remove the requirement that our students be proficient on our state assessments in allowing principals to look at multiple indicators to determine proficiency and promotion for our students as they do at this current time. And those represent the major changes to that policy.
And as protocol, all of the first readings are online for any input from administrators, teachers, or parents, and the board. So thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Thank you. Item B, ESEA Title I Initiative Update, Appendix C, Dr. Smith.
Yes, thank you. We have a presentation for you tonight. We have Dr. Eddie West. He is going to update the board and the community on the work that he has been doing for the system in relation to our Title I initiatives and also our after-school program.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Members of the board, it's a privilege always to be with you to share a Title I Evaluation Update. I've got one single objective tonight, and that is to bring you up-to-date on two initiatives which require external evaluators. First is an after-school supplemental education program, which began last year. The second is the School Improvement Grant at Snipes Elementary. So I'll briefly go over those with you. You recall from last year that the Supplemental Educational Services Program is actually in 24 schools, not 25. It's for educationally disadvantaged students. It's an after-school program that utilizes compass learning combined with homework, time, and snack, two days a week at each school. Based on last year where we had people coming in from other schools, this year, the hiring has been within the school. So trying to get teachers to work with the students that they teach after-school, they do get compensated for that. We're continuing to use a logic evaluation model, which is recommended by the federal grant officials. Last year provided an initial baseline where we were able to take the new EOG scores, and this year, we'll have the full year so we can compare last year's scores with this year's scores. Based on the scale score range, last year, when we looked at the scores, most of those students were in a higher scale score range within Level 1 and Level 2. So I anticipate, based on that, they moved up to 2 and 3. So we will know for sure after the EOGs are finished. In doing the analysis, we obviously do pre-post tests, matching the students up, but we also look at the activities that the students are involved in. It's a web-based program. What was their attendance? How long did it take them to master a certain objective? What impact does that have during the regular school day? One of the things we're adding this year, because we can do it, because we've got the pre-post test scores, is the cost-benefit analysis, the resource allocation. What, what kind of return are we getting for the investment that's put in after-school? And I'm sure there'll be some new findings that emerge, as they always do, as we look at the program. That's a quick overview of that. The next one is the Snipes School Improvement Grant. It was a competitive grant that we prepared for the system. It's a resource add-on for Snipes School only. It requires an organizational commitment, and I'm pleased that Ms. Talbert is coming here tonight from the school because they've worked diligently on that to get the commitment, not only at the school level, but from Ms. Jackson's office. The grant is focused on work facilitation and how to better improve the work of the school, both instructional and administratively, and the, with the bottom line of improving student achievement. The grant was $1.8 million approximately. This past year, the year we're in, Snipes School received a little over $900,000, most of that in personnel costs for additional teachers to reduce class size and teacher assistance. Next year, and in the third year, subject to the valuation, they'll receive a little over $460,000. With all school improvement grants, it's going to meet federal regulations. I'll go over those in just a second. The authorization requirements means they have to follow certain protocols in terms of Title I. The grants focus on capacity building within each classroom and then within the school, and they are targeted interventions that are research-based. I'll go over those in just a second. There are four components to the grant. One is to develop teacher and school leader effectiveness. And I've been amazed watching the time-task analysis that's been done on Ms. Talbert, where she has to keep a log every day of what she does and what she spends her time on. And it reminds me, Mr. Bullard, no offense, ma'am, of a lawyer running the clock. You know, she's got to account for every hour. The second big focal point is to implement comprehensive education reform strategies, which I'll go over in just a second. Third is to increase the learning time at the school and to create community-oriented schools with parental involvement. And fourth is to give the school more operational flexibility. Those are the components. If you look at each one, teacher and school leader effectiveness, there's a rigorous transparent evaluation system, which is really based on two-north logic. I know from knowing how hard the administrators work there, the significant write-ups that they go through to help each teacher grow. They also have to identify the ineffective employees and put them on action plans to improve. There is job-embedded professional development, which is provided, such as John F. Kennedy's staff at the Art Center, the Kennedy Center, coming in and working with the teachers onsite. And they also have built-in strategies to recruit and retain teachers. The two biggest areas, which I'll talk about a little bit tonight, involve implementing research-based programs, and number two, promoting continuous use of data. The last focal point for the grant was increasing learning time, increasing the school day by 15 minutes, and the involvement of parents in the creation of a community-oriented schools. And lastly, the school has been provided, within all the guidelines, sufficient flexibility to implement the changes they wanted to make, and Dr. Smith's staff has been there to provide ongoing assistance and support to the faculty. Now, anytime you start something new, you've got some implications. First thing is you've got to look at your current practices and examine them, and see, are they research-based, and if not, why? Secondly, it means having to learn new skills. For example, teachers might be used to planning by themselves in the classroom and not working with other teachers at a certain grade level, and all of a sudden, they've got to sit down and plan together. So learn the skills of teamwork, which means that everybody is accountable at a certain grade level or for the whole school, learning new processes such as how to take short-cycle assessment data and turn that into viable lesson plans. data and turn that into viable lesson plans. Whenever you go through that kind of process, there are always growth pains, and life is a bell-shaped curve. You've got some that grasp it faster than others within a faculty, but the key thing there is educational gains. And I have seen some preliminary data from the EOG testing, and I think you're going to be very pleased with the results. Part of the issue in any change process is to change the way people think. Traditionally, teachers and principals have spent more time on operational and tactical things such as getting the buses there on time, which is important, making sure everybody gets the lunch line on time, which is important, and then doing a lesson plan. Now, that's the traditional way of thinking prior to this grant. Now, whenever you do that, what you've got is not being academic at all, but what's called force field analysis. It's based on Newton's physics principle. For every action there's an equal and opposite reaction. And applied to social sciences, you've got driving forces, the grant, restraining forces, folks not wanting to change, and you slowly have to push ahead to get to where you want to go, which is a higher level of achievement. Which means you have to change the way you think. And I think this is the biggest hurdle that had to be overcome first. Thinking strategically about what am I going to be teaching not on Monday, but how does this Monday relate to the Friday, relate to the next Friday, relate to the next Friday. So it's learning to think strategically about where you want students to be versus just surviving a particular day. So basically what the grant has done is to sort of push the faculty to be more productive in how they work, more efficient in how they work. And I've got numbers assigned here, but one strategy might push them what I would call one-point positive, but it takes the third one down there to push them over the hump in their thinking. So in essence, what you've got, that's fine, go ahead. No, this is called, this would be the year I would call unfreezing the organization. You've got driving forces and restraining forces, and we've been pushing. Then the driving forces slowly overtake the restraining forces, and then by the third year, the school has a whole new layer of achievement. And basically, if you look at the cycle, you'll see that when you start seeing the test scores and other things this year. Now, there are three progress measures that are used. One is an INDISTAR, which is a federal requirement, which is information put in by Theresa Conlon based on staff input that she does each week. There's a logic evaluation model which our firm uses to meet the federal guidelines, which enables us to match up what they're self-reporting with what we see externally. The key thing here is to try to get some longitudinal impact. For example, as part of this, I will look at the test scores at Virgo this year for the students who were there last year. But I'll be able to follow students all the way through from grade 1, 2, 3, all the way up through the life cycle of the grant. Now, I'm showing you some test scores here that do show some growth. These are the short-cycle assessments, quarterly short-cycle assessments. I've got the grade-level analysis there for 3rd, 4th, and 5th grades because they're the EOG schools. The reading growth there is incremental, and I want you to notice there where you've got the burgundy bar and the blue bar. I'll comment on that in a minute. You've got ongoing instructional changes where the teachers are trying to take the professional development they've had and incorporate the new ideas, and they take the short-cycle assessments and work on focus areas where the students need the greatest credit. So that's the reading. When you go to math, math is more precise. You see continuing, ongoing improvement, deficiencies are being addressed. The growth cycles are different in math because it's more precise. But again, notice the bars there in the tan, how close they are during the first and second cycles. Now, if you'll go to the next slide, please. One of the reasons for that, if you look, and this is a concern as an evaluator would have, when I match up the teacher absences with the flat curve, the flat lines, on the short-cycle assessment, that's when the teacher attendance was higher during those particular time periods. So there is a correlation there. It could be a potential problem. The absences of the staff, this year I counted personal leave and sick leave. I did not count annual leave. But there were 200, and I did not count professional leave. So I only counted those absences that literally the teacher controlled. And as of end of April, there were 255, I think, which does have an impact, particularly when they're all within a certain concertary time period. Next, please. Based to date, and once the final evaluation data comes in, I do know there's some growth in one academic area for the school which is fairly substantive. And of course, until those results are validated, I can't discuss them. In the 3rd grade, we've seen some good growth. There needs to be a greater focus on arts integration, and I know they've got some things planned this summer where more teachers are going to go through the arts training. Lesson planning, they've come a long way with lesson planning. I think Ms. Talbert, you would agree with that. Come a long way. The teamwork on lesson planning can still move forward a little bit. There hasn't been the parent engagement that had been hoped for, so engaging parents definitely might need to be a focal point. Reaching special needs students, the MTSS or multi-tier student services was a little late getting operational. Therefore, I think it needs more focus next year. Teamwork at the grade level has come a long way, but it needs to improve. And based on the number of absences, there may need to be some resource reallocation to hire two permanent substitutes that are involved in instructional planning so they can be ongoing, given the number of absences. Next, any questions?
There were 255 absences. Among how many teachers?
I think there were like 40 teachers overall. Isn't that right, roughly about 40?
30 classroom teachers.
30, yeah. And I only counted classroom teachers. I didn't count arts, PE, all that. Overall, I think it was about 40, 25, 230 would be.
So that's about eight absences per teacher?
Yeah.
Over the year or over a short period?
Through April. However, at one grade level, Dr. Hickey, there was an average of two weeks out per teacher. And that does impact.
Was that 2nd grade or 5th grade?
5th.
Those are the teachers.
5th grade.
Dr. West, back to the slide on the SES evaluation update.
Sure thing.
The pre-test. Once you got the post-test and the results, how is this information given out? Do the students get information on it, the parents and the teachers? How is this disseminated?
Okay, we will have the EOG. Last year, we just had the scores which were given out by the school. This year, we'll have, first of all, for the first time, a pre-post because the EOG changed. And that will be really up to the individual school level, how it's given out. What we can do is give them a growth chart that shows where each student is at, which is what we'll do, and it was how far they've come. So if they want to include that in a packet to the parents when the student comes back to school, it can be done. What we do is we take the results after they've been validated by the state. We match up the student ID numbers and look at each student, the number of activities they went through, how difficult they were, how long it took them, and using a statistical procedure, try to figure out how much the after-school program had an impact on their EOG scores. So that's how we use that.
The SES that you're talking about is an after-school program, correct?
Correct.
Two days a week, you said?
Two days a week.
Okay. And you said the baseline for those students that you was?
Last year's EOG scores.
For the EOG scores, but you used a baseline of 1 to 2?
I used, most of those, all those students actually, last year were in what I would call the high 1s and high 2s, about 80% of them of the four-point scale. It'll be a five-point scale this year. But you either got a Level 1 proficiency, Level 2, Level 3, Level 4. Under Title I guidelines, they're the students you have to focus on.
Right, but how are you able to attribute? I mean, you would anticipate, you said you were anticipating a year's growth, and I would expect that over a year's time of instruction, just general instruction. I think we asked you this question before. I remember very vaguely, but how do you, how are you assessing the?
The growth?
The after-school program, yeah. How are you attributing the growth to the after-school program and not to the actual school?
We figure the percent of time they get additional instruction. We look at the activities that they go through and how long they spend on each of those activities, and which of those activities related to goals on the EOG. And then we'll run an analysis of variance on it, covariates, to see what impact it really has. And in some schools, it'll have a higher significant level of significance in other schools. Because if in the schools in which they have the regular classroom teacher, let's say a 5th grade teacher also targeting the after-school program, he or she better knows where that student is when they come in after school versus the teacher that might be a kindergarten teacher that's just picking up some extra money.
Every student at the school is not in the after-school.
No, no, no. Each school has a lot of a certain number of slots.
So we, I guess one of the things would be a control group that you would have the students who do not have the benefit of the after-school program and what kind of growth they had.
Right.
And compare that against the students who did have the benefit of the after-school program.
Sure.
And compare their results to see whether or not there's a correlation.
And we'll have that, we'll have that in the report.
Is that how, would that be how you'd measure whether or not one could reasonably assume that the after-school program did or did not have a benefit?
That, have the equal number of students at Level 1 and 2 compared to that group. But the key thing is also looking at the variable of do they have the same teacher they have during the day, how long it taken them to do the activities, those things. But you're right, Ms. Hickey, because the control group is right there within the school, and we've got the numbers. Other questions?
Any other questions?
Not really questions, Mr. Hayes, but given the fact that you've shown it, Snipes, or at least you haven't shown it, but it's your opinion that high numbers of absences are going to lead to poor results, or at least are?
I wouldn't try to imply that. I've seen some preliminary scores on the EOGs, and the scores show what I would call improved growth.
Well, I understand, but one of your recommendations is to consider having permanent substitutes because of such a problem in teacher attendance. I wonder if this is unique to this school or what we're seeing across the district. And I think it'll be interesting for the board just to have, maybe Dr. Wellmers run a report on, you know, sort of median absences by school within the district, and without necessarily identifying people, just outliers which may relate, you know, just to see, you know, is eight absences a normal amount of absences per teacher, or, you know, what are we looking at across the district here, and what kind of, you know, human resources policies we need to put in place to improve this attendance? I mean, the reality is we can't be providing regular substitutes for every school because our employees don't show up. And is there a way we can improve on attendance, not only of our students but of our employees?
Right. And some of them have valid reasons, I'm sure, you know, maternity, whatever happens to be. But you mentioned outliers. I look at things that might have an impact on the test scores, and that's when I match up and I see the flatness of the scores, then I pretty well match up both things. So it is a significant issue, I think.
I think that would have to have an effect, the attendance. And I think most schools, I think, try to have subs that work a lot with that particular school.
But for example, if you took, say, a couple of teacher assistant positions and converted them substitute positions, you know, for a half-day, that type of thing, where they could be involved in instructional planning, it really might have a long-term impact on the test scores.
Dr. Hickey brings up a good point about the student absences. Did you take into consideration absences by the students?
Sure, sure. It's no more significant than it is in any other school, elementary school. Most of them are there.
So the student absences were fairly average as compared to other schools?
Right.
Any other comments, questions?
Thank you all for the privilege of being back with you to give this report. And as soon as we get all the data back on the EOGs, I'll be glad to come back and give you a final evaluation report on each one.
Thank you. We're looking forward to that.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, item 8, Superintendent's Report. Item A, impact of the Senate budget, Dr. Mark.
All right. This budget year's probably been as tough to predict as any budget year I can remember in being a superintendent. It's the first time I can remember where we didn't have, we had a governor's budget. It didn't come out until the legislative session started. They're usually out ahead of time. The Senate budget was, it was interesting. We were, when we started our budget process, if you remember the Budget Committee, we were estimating across the board raises of about 2% to 3%. And we actually based a lot of our planning around that concept. Well, the Senate budget came out with an average raise of 11.2%, well above our predicted of where raises were going to be. Now, there's the caveat of they have to give up career status and for that, and that's a decision for teachers. But just in general, we have to plan, if this budget passes, on the assumption that everyone would take that, and that's what our planning basis has to be. 25% did not go away in this Senate budget. It just got modified a little bit. And the 11% is an average. There's one point in there, I think it's the year 7, that it's actually almost a 20% raise. And then if you get out to the outliers, it's a little, like a 1% raise for those who are at the 30-plus point. So it's an average of 11%, not a straight 11% across the board.
Oh, that's a difference.
So each teacher will have to look at where they would fit on this scale. School administrators, there was an approximate 2% adjustment. For others, there was about a $600 actual pay increase and some increased funds for some, for benefits. For others, there was about a six hundred dollar actual pay increase and some increased funds for some, for benefits. And that sounds great. And that was the headline for the, for the news for a day and a half. But it comes at a price. And it comes at the price of a hundred and thirteen teacher assistants in our district. In order to pay for those raises, they cut teacher assistance statewide by fifty percent. And when we're talking about the amount of assessment that goes on now at the elementary level, we talk about read-to-achieve, and everything the state's trying to accomplish with helping those third graders be ready to read, we cut the one tool that those teachers had, and that's their assistance. And that's a position that's been cut literally every year for the last three years. It also, when you look at, they were supposed to make a, a class size adjustment to go to one to seventeen in K three. They, they will no longer do that, so the allocation will be one to eighteen. Five percent office, reduction in central office, thirty percent in DPI, transportation by six percent. And the school's will eliminate driver's education and the funding for that. And driver's education will become a pay-as-you-go operation, where we will have to charge a full fee to cover any costs that we have associated with driver's ed. Looking at our, our budget with the county, there is no way in the five percent allocation that we could bring back all of those TAs. We could bring back some, but that, the hit would be well beyond the, the increase we're getting from that. And I'll let Mary Hazel talk about, more about that in a minute. The House budget is due out probably Thursday or Friday of this week. I anticipate it to be somewhat, somewhere between the governors and the senate, and then we'll go from there. Mary Hazel?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, as soon as we have the House budget, we could probably schedule either a, a budget work session or whatever the, the board prefers in terms of planning, how we'll adjust our original plan, you know, to these changes.
We're looking at June tenth, prior to the retirement reception is when that was planned. We should have the House budget by then. And I think it will move fast once it happens. So we, we apply, if we can get an eleven percent raise, that is great. But the, the cost of that eleven percent raise is, is the, is the real question.
So just to dumb the numbers down for me a little bit, it says local budget impact for the teachers is one point six million dollars. And the impact of the hundred and thirteen teacher assistant positions is four point one million.
Correct.
So that's, you know, five point seven million. The increased money we received from the county is how much?
It's five percent, but about, all about one point five million of that really covers just general state increases and other costs.
Okay, so we've got one point five increases that we're gonna use for teaching supplements.
Right, which now, if they get an eleven percent raise, makes more sense to, to probably switch to protecting, uh, trying to recover some teacher assistant positions.
But, so we got one point five increase for the county?
After, yeah, after the increases.
Just to clarify.
I was just trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out, you know, did all the increase we got from the county go to what it's gonna cost for us locally with the eleven percent increase?
This would be, we had a salary reserve for either matching the state raise, whatever it was, or supplements. And it was kind of a range that was included in our original county request. So this is saying that the estimate of this plan would be you'd have to spend one point six million of the three point two county increase for that.
Okay, so we have one point six left over.
One point six, my original email to you yesterday was one point five, now it's one point six. I recalculated. But, so one point six is, yeah, the, the estimated cost of salaries. Now, if teachers make, we, we don't know what decisions they're gonna make. This assumes they'll all take the higher pay. If some of them choose to stay on the other scale, it, it could reduce that a little bit and give you a little bit more local flexibility, but we won't know that for a month or two.
Given an eleven percent pay rate after five years of no raises, I'll be very surprised.
The, the, the majority of this would go to the ones getting the large raises, and they're probably gonna take it. You know, the ones that are gonna turn it down might be the ones getting a one percent raise, so we really don't know, so we have to kind of plan on the most expensive possibility. And then if we have savings later, we could, we could repurpose it.
So we planned on three, and the state has exceeded our goal by eight percent.
It does, it does. So just, just to be clear, just so I'm figuring this correctly.
The four point one is how much they're gonna reduce our state funding for TAs.
That's right.
And so whether or not you choose to pick any of those up locally in lieu of something else would be a decision that you'd have to make. Versus, this sort of assumes a reduction in force because you had already had plans for most of that money.
Yes. But what the county gave us, basically, if I'm correct, just, you know, covers what we'll have to pay in local for the teachers.
It does.
And we have one point six million left over that we could allocate to the teaching assistance.
Yeah, but you also had other items you had identified in the budget process, so you'd have to, to look at that and decide. You know, there were a few other things that you had already put as your priority, so it's just a matter of where that falls in. You know, I couldn't, we'd have to reprioritize.
Assuming this goes through, and the House budget's similar to that, is we'll give you the list of priorities that you had, and you can decide where TAs would, would slot in that list of priorities. And everything, we just bump some stuff down that list.
I guess this may be premature, we're gonna get to this as an item. But part of the consensus agenda is approving new hires. How do we approve the new hires of teaching assistants when we, when it looks like we may have to have a reduction in force?
There'd be no new hires for teacher assistants on that list, would there?
I thought there was. Did you take those off?
I didn't know.
Well, they may be specific for, like, accepting the children.
You know, the, the idea right now is to basically freeze all of those positions in TAs, and would probably, if we went through a riff, we'd then move people around. So this did catch us a little bit off-guard in the middle of what we were doing in hiring now, but they should be priority positions.
We had also cut twenty-two in the planning for next year anyway. Twenty-two positions already, based on last year's state cuts. And so we've been through attrition trying to, to take those, those positions, but there would not be enough attrition for this many.
We've used attrition. Last year, the budget came so late that we decided to fund our TA allotment using local funds to keep it level. Well, we knew we would have enough retirements and, and folks who left to cover that this year. Well, we've covered our attrition. This would be beyond what's normal attrition, well beyond. So we'll just wait, we'll wait and see where the House budget looks like.
Correct me if I'm wrong, was driver education on sort of the chopping block a few years ago?
It's been on, it's been cut back. They were talking about cutting it a couple of years ago. And then they said no, and they did allow, we should already allow you to charge a fee. We charge nominal fee. But if they cut the funding out entirely, then we would have to charge a fee high enough to, to cover any cost.
Do you have an, an estimate of what that would be by chance? We can get that for you, but we, we haven't calculated that yet. Right now, we charge twenty-five a student. Um, and because, but because of the cuts, I guess, three years ago.
The, if, what, what's coming out of, of the state is, in some of the things that we've read, just to kind of throw a number out there, is anywhere between three and four hundred dollars a kid. That's, that's, that's a, a rough estimate. But again, I would say rough estimate. We use the, we use the all the money for driver's ed that we get for driver's ed. We don't take any money from somewhere else to use for driver's ed. So it all has to come out of that block grant we get from, for driver's ed.
And one confusing aspect of, of this is that it's a sort of a two-year or one-year phase out. The, the first year DPI would have the option to go ahead and, and take the driver's ed reduction now and use the money to offset the transportation reduction. But we won't know until the, well, I guess the state budget would have to be approved, and then the state board would have to make a policy change. So it would be a few months before we knew which of those was gonna happen.
Since they're having a thirty percent reduction, they'll be about thirty percent slower. They're gonna get all out.
Can they move any stuff?
And there's already some, some pushback for this. There's already some pushback.
Any other comments? Okay, item nine, under consensus items, item A, personnel, attendance B, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would request the board approve the personnel matters presented.
Move for approval.
Comments, questions?
I guess this is where my, my question just came from. You know, flipping through here, and, and again, I, you know, I see, and I'm not picking on this person, I don't know her, she's probably fine. You know, Kyla Johnson, Pine Valley, teacher assistant, and I can flip through and find other people whose job descriptions are teacher assistant. Keep flying, there's one from Gregory. You know, there's one from Castle Hayne.
If I could interrupt just for a second, what, the teacher assistants that we're hiring right now are, are called time-certain, which means they're, they're, most of those are for the remainder of this year. They're the fill a need that we have right now. They're, they're not for next year. So they're, they're told that they're time-certain, which means they have an ending contract at the end of the school year, and that ends for them. So it, we'd like to be able to bring them back, but just like you're saying, right now, it looks like we would not be able to.
Okay, well, that's fine. That was really my concern. I would hate to think we're hiring people just so we can then riff them in like a couple of, you know, like, oh, well, you have a job, and a couple of weeks later, oh, by the way, you're, you're now unemployed. You know, that doesn't seem very fair.
Good point, but that, but these folks are told right now that this is for this time period.
Okay.
You have any questions? If there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item B, certified personnel recommendation for one-year contract, business E, Dr. Wellmers.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. This is the, kind of the first time we've done this. We've done a one-year contract. These would be teachers who are currently in their third or fourth year, or were up for tenure, or had not achieved tenure before. With the change in the law, what we now offer them is a one-year contract. And the way we've treated them is much like we did probationary teachers in the past, many of them are. They're just not moving to tenure, they're moving to the one-year contract. Depending upon how the twenty-five percent process goes, that may be that they would be able to be offered four-year contracts. But right now, everybody's on a one-year contract. Just like probationary teachers before, we work with the principals on this list to make sure that they meet all the policy requirements that we have for our probationary teachers, make sure they belong on this list and ready to present it to you. So first time we've done it, but this is for one-year contracts.
The injunction that was at the state level only affects tenured teachers in the twenty-five percent rule as it applies to tenured teachers. Anybody who did not have tenure now rules to one-year contracts.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any questions, comments? If there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item C, budget amendments, state public school fund budget amendment number eight. And others, business F, Mayor Hazel Small.
Move for approval. Sorry.
Second.
Questions? If there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item D, change of school assignments, business double A, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recommend the release of these students to neighboring school districts where their parents are employed.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? If there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed, approved. Item ten, under old business, item A, Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustee Appointments, business G. It's a pleasure to, I'd like to talk for just a minute about the, our appointments to the Cape Fear Community College. The New Hanover County Board of Education is responsible for appointing four of the thirteen members of the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. And recently, we had two vacancies, one due to a, a four-year term expiring, and the other one due to Mr. Clark moving from, he wasn't, we appointed a trustee several years ago. He's moving from here to Louisiana to take a position there. The first appointment we had to make was for a four-year slot that was occupied by Mr. William Turner, and I'm glad to see Mr. Turner here tonight because he re-applied, and of course, we heard nothing but chilling things about Mr. Turner from, from Mr. Turner, and then also from others down at Cape Fear Community College. So we know you're a true asset down there. And so the board has voted to reappoint Mr. Turner to a four-year term to the Cape Fear Community College Board of Trustees. Also, with Mr. Clark leaving, there was a two-year time slot there that needed to be filled, and we had some very good individuals apply for both openings, really, some very good individuals. And we had interviews for both positions. And the second appointment we made, which will be a two-year appointment, was to Mr. John Millia. And I think Mr. Millia is also here tonight. So if you two would like to stand, we appreciate you being here. I'd like to give you a round of applause.
Now, we do have to vote.
Yeah, I, but I, well, it's not official, we haven't voted yet, so. So I guess we need to vote, right, Mr. Board?
Yes, sir.
Keep me straight here, getting ahead of myself.
Well, I move that we approve Mr. Turner and Mr. Millia for the appointments to Cape Fear Community College.
Second.
Any comments, questions? If there's a favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Posed. Now it's official. Thank you, and, and thank you for what y'all do. You both are very involved in there right now, we realize that. And we appreciate it. I know they appreciate it, and we're looking forward to working with you because with the public school system and the community college working together, then the students here and there are, are gonna certainly benefit. So we appreciate it. Appreciate your willingness to, to be involved down there and work with us. Okay, item eleven, under new business, item A, nurses' contract, business H, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Recommend approval of our annual school nurse contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
Two, two comments, or questions, or both. Contract's almost the same as it is from last year, with two exceptions. One is item nine. It provides for a twenty-hour-per-week nurse assigned to the Head Start program. Where is the funding from that?
From the Head Start grant.
From the Head Start grant, okay. That's, that's fine. That's just clarification. The second question is that the contract, and I guess it includes those twenty hours, is fifty-four thousand dollars and change, more than it was last year. And that's based on?
Increase in cost of nurses.
Okay, so the Health Department decided to increase salaries for the, for their staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna point out the obvious, that an outside agency, of which we have no control, increase the cost of their staff that we're going to pay for, and we're going to cut a hundred and thirty TAs. And are we all okay with that? I'm not okay with that.
I'm not okay with it either. I wasn't okay with it last year.
I'm just asking. I mean, I just, it's, and again, we do this, we do this every year with the Health Department. They, it's very nice that they feel like they can give annual increases to their employees while we're cutting positions of our employees. I think we should have some, you know, they, they should come and ask us if, if they think we, we think we can sort of absorb any increases in our budget. I mean, we're, it's a, this is two point one four four million dollar expenditure to our budget. I mean, fifty thousand dollars is sort of a small amount of money, but that would fund, how many teaching assistants would that fund? Two?
About, with benefits, about twenty-five thousand per assistant.
So a small increase in their salary for these nurses makes it so we can't keep two teaching assistants employed. And again, you know, the mission of new Hanover County schools, we have to keep our children safe, but it's primarily to educate children. So that's my concern with the contract.
Do you know what the raise was?
Not now.
Do we have any conversations with them about that?
We negotiated a contract, and this was, um, this was the best we could do.
The, and refresh my memory, why is it that we go through the Health Department? What costs do they absorb?
We have gone through the Health Department for the school nurses since we stopped employing our own school nurses back in the eighties because the cost was much cheaper to go through the Health Department than to employ our own.
Is that still the case?
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, how would we even begin to hire our own nurses?
It was difficult, and we had to, the last actual school nurse was at Langley High School, where I was assistant principal until she retired. It became more and more difficult for It became more and more difficult for us to hire our own school nurses. We, they phased it in over time, but like I said, I remember the last one because she was, worked with me.
I think it's fine that we contract with the health department, it's, it's just that, you know, we can't absorb increases every single year. I mean, you know, we keep talking as a board that teachers haven't gotten raises in years, that we're cutting staff every year. But every other outside agency we contract with thinks that they can keep increasing their costs, and that, well, not everyone, that after last year's message to the mental health people, their contract's 100 percent the same. So I think they got the message that we can't keep increasing costs every year. I, I kind of don't know where I, where I want to go with this, to be honest with you, but, I mean, I think we need to have a decent discussion with them, saying, you know, next year, this contract can't be another 3 percent increase for all their staff while we're cutting positions on our staff.
Can we, can we cut some of these, these positions, or at least split maybe some of the full-time positions to maybe reduce some of the, of the cost?
I think we looked at that previously, and we were told that that wasn't working, and that they actually had wanted to increase at certain places, which, I mean, I looked carefully, and there's no increases anywhere.
We, yes, we, we had been cutting school nurses over the, over the time we were in the budget crisis. Last year, I believe, was when we were trying to recover some and go back to, to the need that we had, 'cause we were certainly not meeting the need. We still are not back to where we were with our original coverage of school nurses. So we're still below where, where we were when the cuts began.
Didn't we discuss at one time not having nurses at every school, but having?
LPNs.
Yeah, LPNs?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know it was like five, you'd have, you have to have, do they, they, there has to be a nurse on site as opposed to an LPN?
The nurse, an LPN cannot work on a site unless she is supervised by an RN. So that would not decrease our costs, in fact, it would increase it, 'cause we would have to have an RN on site.
So the supervision has to be someone on site?
Yes.
Okay. What about the schools that have the what clinics?
We looked at that last year and asked what to come to us with a proposal, and as you recall, that proposal was as expensive or more expensive than having school nurses, 'cause it's two different things.
Would this increase, I guess it wouldn't spread out over all of the school nurses, it probably still would be?
What they provided to us is increased cost. I mean, it's not, we're giving them pay raises, increased cost.
Yeah, I think it turns out probably it'd be about 3 percent cost of living increase is what we're providing.
Right. Yeah, it's just increased cost to keep us where we were.
Any other questions? We have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Proposed.
I guess I'll oppose it.
Pardon?
Opposed.
What is it, 4-2? Yep. Okay. Passes 4-2. Next item, item B, New Hanover County Mental Health Contract, appendix I, Dr. Holliday.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Recommend approval for our mental health contract at the sites, as you see, where, where we have our mental health services provided, 18 elementary and middle schools. And it shows you the number of students that we have served, and actually, is only a portion of the cost of this program. So I recommend approval.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions?
My, my comment is, if you remember, last year, we initially voted this down, and they came back with a improved proposal covering more sites. This contract is identical to the second one that we approved, covering, I can't remember, it was three or four more sites than their initial proposal. And then if you go back to last year's agenda item versus this year's agenda item, they're providing services to over 100 more children this past year than the year before. And, and that's a good thing, but it, but it's also not an accidental thing, because we spoke with them and we required them to cover more of our schools, and so they have. And as a result, they're helping more of our students, and I'm glad to see they came back with the same proposal this year, and they didn't increase their costs, because they realized that we don't have an unlimited budget. And, you know, again, our primary focus needs to be on educating our students, so I'm actually happy with this contract.
They have been very responsive, thank you, Dr. Hickey. They have been very responsive when we have asked for additional help in certain schools. And as you know, we've had several mental health issues this year that have required some support, and in some of those cases, we didn't have a site at the school, and we asked them for help, and they provided it.
Good. Any other comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Item C, locational rehabilitation contract of neural, appendix J, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is our annual renewal of our agreement with Vote Rehab, and ask that you please approve it.
Move for approval.
Well, let's finish, Dr. Holliday.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, approved, thank you. Item D, Atlantic Speech Therapy, appendix K, Dr. Holliday.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This is our contract that we have to support students who have IEPs, and also some students who are not in our schools, but we're required to serve, and this is our, this supplements our speech therapists that we have in our schools, but this is a cheaper way to serve some of our students who are not, who have some specific needs, and some students who we're receiving service plans, which is not an IEP. These are students who are not in our schools, who we're required to serve under IDEA.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, approved. Been asked that before we, since we're through with Dr. Holliday, before we go to Mr. Hance, that we'll take a five-minute break at this time. Give you time to prepare, Mr. Hance.